Call our January 12, 2015 meeting to order with the roll call please.
Mayor, Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
At this time, all who are able, if you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We move on to awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the day of January 19, 2015, is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s commemoration day in the city of Salina. Damian and Dekeisha Cooper will read the proclamation.
Please.
Good afternoon. I'm Reverend Damian DeShawn Cooper.
I'm Dekeisha Cooper.
I attend Foray State University. I'm from Salina, Kansas. Graduated from Salina Central.
And I attend Washburn University and I graduated also from Salina Central.
Will be reading the proclamation, arreing Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Whereas, the 19th day of January is the birthday anniversary of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and...
Whereas, Dr. King stood before an entire world as a man of peace, champion of human dignity, and example of love and brotherhood and...
Whereas, the citizens of Salina do recognize Dr. King's contribution to the good of all humankind and they do desire to perpetuate and implement the ideals expressed in his dream of peace and harmony among all individuals.
Whereas, the citizens of Salina remember the dream of the beloved community is very much alive and that everyone shares in the responsibility of creating a just society. We must continue to act on the legacy of Dr. King to ensure the civil rights of all individuals.
Now, therefore, I, Aaron Householder, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the day of January 19, 2015, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s commemoration day and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in extending recognition and honor to the memory of this great leader of humankind.
And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this day, January 12, 2015.
Great, thank you. What events do you all have planned this week? I know there's quite a few.
Yes, I'll be reading you as she be handing out several posters and buttons. And so, Thursday on January 15 at 7:00 PM, there will be a Langston Hughes project will perform Ask Your Mama, 12 Moods for Jazz at the Westland Fitzpatrick Auditorium. On Friday at 7:00 PM, there will be one mic, open mic, plus poetry series at 7:00 PM at Astra Books and Coffee House, 141 North Santa Fe, featuring poet Miss Payne from Kansas City, Missouri. Musical guests will be the hip-hop trio, A Bonnie Tuss from Lawrence, $5 cover charge, and open to those 16 and older. On Saturday at 6:00 PM, community potluck in the student activity center in Kansas-Westland University. You can bring your dish into share. Drinks will be provided. Those attending will be offered free admission to the 7:00 PM basketball game against Ottawa. On Sunday at 3:30 PM, community-wide celebration, Westland Sam Chapel, including a presentation of the anthem, a 15-minute musical tribute to the life and work of the King, plus special music by the Kansas-Westland Chorale. And the guest speaker would be the Lance Institute Wes Jackson. And we will have Salina Central High School senior Trayvon Cooper will perform King's famous "I Have a Dream" speech. And finally, on January 19 at noon, interfaith memorial service at St. John's Missionary Baptist Church, 215 South Chicago. In 1960, during the dawn of the civil rights movement, acclaimed poet Langston Hughes began writing an epic work entitled Ask Your Mama, 12 Moods for Jazz. Thank you.
Great, lots of things. I've got your signed proclamation up here.
Item 3.2, the week of January 11 through 17, 2015, is Good Government Week in the city of Salina.
I'll read this proclamation. This is a proclamation of the city of Salina proclaiming January 11 through the 17, 2015, as Good Government Week. Whereas, good government is essential to building a safe, healthy, vibrant, and productive community and whereas, good government forms partnerships and identifies economic opportunities to leverage excellent services and provide a high quality of life for its citizens and whereas, good government is evidenced by ethical, effective, inclusive, and responsible political leadership combined with a highly competent and efficient, strategic, and hard-working staff and whereas, good government political leadership demonstrates civil and ethical behavior and recognizes that a talented and competent workforce is essential to carry out the organization's objective. And whereas, the employees of Saline County and its citizens have renewed opportunity to experience good government leadership with all the transformations of the Saline County Board of Commissioners that will occur, which did occur today on Monday, January 12, 2015. Now, therefore, I, Aaron Householder, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of January 11 through January 17, 2015, Good Government Week and urge every citizen of Salina and Saline County to join me in both supporting the employees of Saline County and the new Saline County Board of Commissioners and by encouraging good government by all local government entities. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this day, January 12, 2015. I appreciate that meeting this morning. It was quite a nice bringing in of the new commissioners and got off to a running start, already doing some action, so it was great to see. And then before we get into citizens forum, I'll just go over again, just kind of, let me go over just kind of the general process. There may be some confusion to kind of how we do things here. This is an existing protocol we have. I've probably been maybe a little looser with the meetings than probably I should be, but the idea is to encourage people to come out, but we'll probably better stick to the straight and narrow. But so, I'll just go through the meeting protocols for those wishing to address the city commission. The protocols are included with a hard copy of our agendas available to the public at the back of the room there prior to the meeting. And order of discussion, generally the order of discussion after introduction of an item includes comments and information by staff, followed by commissioner questions or inquiries. Applicants and interested citizens may speak on them at the close of the public discussion. The item will be considered and commission action taken. Citizens may address the commission on items under discussion when recognized by the mayor. When addressing the commission, please move to the microphone and clearly state your name and address. If you're representing a group or organization, please provide the name and address as well. In order to ensure that all persons may have an opportunity to speak, comments will be limited to three minutes. Keep your remarks brief and do not repeat what's already been said and feel free... Sorry, I jumped off there. Do not ask questions of the commission, just provide your comments and factual information only. And then during the citizens forum, citizens desiring to speak on an item which is not on the agenda may do so under citizens forum. Discussion is limited to five minutes. The commission does not take immediate action. However, items introduced under citizens forum may become agenda items for later meetings or may be referred to city staff for following up. And then just kind of a general policy of how we'll handle things that are out of order, I'll basically ask the person to return their seat. If they don't, I'll ask again, and at that point, if they don't, we'll move on and may have to take other actions, remove the person. So just so everybody's aware, we probably, even though it's on the agenda back there, probably not a bad idea to kind of remind all of us up here as well kind of how the process works. So with that, we have no items on public hearings. Oh, I'm sorry. With that, I'll go ahead and open the citizens forum. Don't want to skip that after I just talked about how to do it. So if anybody has anything to bring before us that is not on today's agenda, feel free to come forward and give us your name and address and three minutes of your thoughts if you want. You can take less if you want.
You said five.
Five on the other meetings with three. Well, you never talk that long, so...
I'm going to today.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go. Keep it to three then.
I hope not.
As commissioners, how far down the road do you really look into the future beyond your term limits?
Economic development, is it in the best interest of the country, of the county? Do you look outside the city limits? We need to look further down the road because science has proven, the experts are telling us, we're running into trouble. So we don't need to be any more economic development. We better stay home and take care of what we got. We better conserve our resources because this drought is going to take us. I love it. I love it. But you people are paying for meat finally. So I hope it stays that way. We need to learn the lesson. We're abusing this planet for greed and it's going to kill us. You people in town are in trouble. So you better look outside the city limits and see what's going on because it's dry and it's going to do it again this summer. So I would ask you gentlemen and lady to look further down the road than just your term and quit doing this, "I want this, I want that." It's we are paying the tax bill. You come to us for taxes, but you implement your own personal agenda and that is wrong. You can't eat money, folks. You better learn it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 5, 2015.
Sir, and I am, well, I guess there's no other items on here. I'd just take a motion to approve the minutes if there's no changes.
I'd like to have discussion about the minute.
Sure.
On page three, I guess this would be the fourth paragraph starts, maybe a question more for Attorney Bangston than just the answer, but it states, "Moved by Commissioner Blanchard, seconded by Commissioner Hardy to authorize legal counsel to prepare a petition to file in Saline County District Court naming Mr. Ray Ruska." Should that be naming Mr. Ruska as, I won't say defendant, but a respondent, or is it, I didn't know if a word was missing as far as what we're naming Mr. Ruska?
Look, don't the two of you start teaming up on this thing.
Didn't come out sounding as proper as it should have.
Commissioner, that's a good point. I honestly cannot recall the, whether we made that elaboration or not in terms of what was actually said. And I am confident that Ms. Wick's was careful in that. If there were words missing, I'm afraid that's the record of what was actually said.
I could attest that the record reflects accurately the motion.
Yeah.
So if there were any words missing that needed to be in there, I'm sure that...
Yeah. Well, both of your points are well taken.
The general, the gist of what was decided upon, I understand. I just didn't know if a particular word was missing.
Yeah, that was the context of what we were trying to accomplish at that time. I'm sure if that's Commissioner Blanchard's recollection and the result of Ms. Wick's work, that is the language that we're left with.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you, when you read it in the phrasing, it says naming Mr. Ray Ruska. If you added the phrase "for the purpose of seeking a judgment," and then read the rest of it, that would flow. I don't know. That may be, if you recall, if that was part of the phrasing or not. I mean, the minutes need to reflect what was said.
I may have been the only one not trying to be in front of that day. But my understanding is simply that we needed to name Mr. Ruska specifically in that. My attempt was simply to get that idea across there and that's somewhat in there without obviously knowing the proper terminology or whatever. So hopefully it can still get through.
Yeah, we know what it means. Okay, so, thank you.
Of all the people, you think I'd have the off switch on my microphone, but...
Oh, am I?
I don't have one. No, John's was not, so yeah, yeah. Okay, so is that remedy that...
I'm satisfied, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the minutes as written.
Second. Motion to second to approve the minutes of January 5, 2015, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0, and that will take us on to administration.
Item 7.1, resolution number 15-7170, setting the date for a public hearing to consider whether certain structures shall be condemned and ordered demolished or repaired.
Mr. Brown on this, I believe, is that correct? Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. Representative Commission, this afternoon Development Services staff bringing to you resolution number 15-7150 to request a public hearing in order to consider whether certain structures shall be condemned and ordered demolished or repaired. Kansas statutes annotated sections 12-1750 through 1756F provide authority and the required procedures that cities can take to eliminate dangerous structures. The purpose of the public hearing is to allow the owner, owner's agent, lien holders of record, occupants of the property to appear and show cause as a wise-up structure should not be ordered to be repaired or demolished. Inspections of the structures located at 234 South Phillips, 627 South Fifth Street, and 500 East Pacific as identified in resolution 15-7170 were performed by the building official and building inspectors using the criteria as listed in chapter 31, article 6 of the Salina Municipal Code. The inspection reports with all of the supporting documentation will be provided at the public hearing for the city commission's consideration. With the adoption of resolution number 15-7170, the following timeline will be set in motion. January 16, 2015, the first publication of resolution 15-7170. January 20, 2015, send via the certified mail a copy of the resolution to each property owner and all identified parties of interest, including lien holders. January 23, 2015, the second publication of resolution 15-7170. February 23, 2015, conduct the public hearing. The adoption of a resolution to set the public hearing has no immediate fiscal impact this time. The conformance with the strategic plan is for goal number one and goal number three. Staff has identified the following alternatives for the city commission. Number one, adopt resolution number 15-7170, setting February 23, 2015, as the public hearing date for dangerous structures located at 234 South Phillips, 627 South Fifth Street, and 500 East Pacific, the U-shaped portion of that building. Or number two, decline to set a public hearing for these dangerous structures. Staff recommends option number one. Enclosed is the building officials' request and resolution number 15-7170.
Great.
I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions for staff on this?
Is this one of those situations where this isn't really a surprise to anyone, including the owner?
This should not come as a surprise. I concur.
Would the 500 East Pacific location, would that be every, I'm assuming that's when you say the U-shaped building, it's everything except for the center strip?
It's everything except for the center portion. Yes, that's correct.
But the U part, would that include some of the sections that might be in front of? There's junk all over that lot. My question is, is that, would it, would the action be to demo the dangerous stuff and clarify it?
This action is for all structures with the exception of the center structure in and of itself.
Okay.
And commissioners, as, when you deal with the structure, you're dealing with the impact to the site. I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
So certainly any impact to the site as a result of that structure is included. But we just wanted to reference the U-shaped structure versus because the center structure is not included, that didn't need to be.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public here to comment on this issue at all? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
I move that we adopt resolution number 15-7170, setting February 23, 2015, as the public hearing date for dangerous structures located at 234 South Phillips, 627 South Fifth Street, and 500 East Pacific, the U-shaped structure.
Second.
Motion to second to adopt resolution number 15-7170. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.2, approve change order number one and supplemental agreement number four for the downtown wellfield improvements contract to airstrippers project number 10-2840.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. HDR Engineering Incorporated designed Phase One of the downtown wellfield improvements and it included two separate contracts. Contract one included the wells and the raw water line and it increased the supply capacity of the downtown wellfield from 10 million gallons a day to 13. That project is 90% complete and BRB Contractors Incorporated is contractor. Contract two included retrofitting the airstrippers at the water treatment plant to increase the capacity of the airstrippers from 10 to 15 million gallons a day. That project's 83% complete and Walters and Morgan Construction is the contractor on that. Today, we're going to talk about contract two, the airstrippers. As a part of the airstripper project, new pumping equipment was installed and cavitation was observed during startup of the pumps. Cavitation is defined as basically the formation and collapse of air bubbles in the liquid. And over time, this cavitation can cause problems with the impeller and the bearings and lead to premature pump failure. Staff and HDR worked together to identify the root cause of the cavitation and developed a solution. HDR performed complex 3D modeling known as computational fluid dynamics of the existing and new piping systems and developed a solution to correct the problem. The model basically indicated that the flow rates entering into the pump on each side of the pump were greatly different and caused an imbalance and also the velocities of the water flow into the pump were very different, and these two items caused cavitation. HDR and staff reviewed alternatives and developed recommended improvements to meet the design objectives of the project. The recommended improvements included moving the pumps, reconfiguring the suction and discharge piping and valves, modifying the pump removal system, and relocating the chemical feed lines. HDR and staff concur that this specific case of cavitation is very unique and neither HDR or the city had any reason to include any complex or costly modeling in the design of the project. Change order number one, construction costs of $138,448 was provided by Walters and Morgan Construction Incorporated. HDR and the city have negotiated to share these costs for the construction costs with HDR paying for the existing materials and labor that cannot be utilized in the recommended improvements and the city paying for new materials and labor that will be used in the recommended improvements. HDR's share is $73,490 and the city's share is $64,958. The attached change order number one increases the original contract price of $916,000 by $138,448, which results in a revised contract price of $1,054,448, and increases the original contract time of July 7, 2014 by 330 calendar days, which results in a revised contract time of June 1, 2015. The attached supplemental agreement costs of $62,990 were actual costs incurred by HDR for the modeling and engineering services for the recommended improvements. HDR and the city have negotiated to share the cost equally, which is similar to the cost share for the construction. HDR's and the city's share of cost is $31,495 each. The attached supplemental agreement number four increases the fee from $428,233 to $459,728 and only includes the city's share of the engineering costs. The improvements are funded through the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund and the original budget for the project was $9330,000. And to date, our actual cost is $8523,658, so we're approximately $800,000 below budget. Therefore, the existing loan can accommodate these additional costs that we're speaking of today. Staff has identified the following options for the city commission's consideration for change order number one. Option one is to approve change order number one for the downtown well and field improvements contract to airstrippers project number 10-2840 to Walters and Morgan Construction Incorporated Manhattan, Kansas, in the amount of $138,448, which results in a revised total contract price of $1,054,448. Or option two is deny approval of change order number one and give further direction to staff for item number two supplemental agreement number four. Option one is approve supplemental agreement number four with HDR Engineering Incorporated of Kansas City, Missouri, for computational fluid dynamics modeling and engineering services for Phase One downtown wellfield improvements project number 10-2840 in the amount of $31,495, which results in a revised estimated fee of $459,728. Option two would be to deny supplemental agreement number four and give further direction to staff. Staff recommends option one for both items one and two above. I would be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Tasker?
Uh-uh.
Would there be any of the 3D modeling, once the work is completed, to determine whether or not the desired result has been achieved?
Basically, we'll be able to find the desired result if our pumps, we don't have cavitation and we check for a vibration, but we would not intend to run any additional modeling. We've got the answers we have and they would, we would not expect those to change based on installing it per the design plans.
The contractor is obviously sharing in the cost of overhaul or repair. Does that imply that this may have been somewhat predictable or there was a problem with the original design?
The engineer is sharing costs with us because we really couldn't pinpoint it as their fault and, but they feel compelled to help us with the costs because they understand we could argue both ways on that. And to avoid a long legal process and argument, we chose to share the costs as we did and they brought us back home again by paying their share.
I just have a question on the note here that the custom-made pipe, the part that we're paying for and keeping, is that something that we anticipate that we'll be able to use somewhere down the road perhaps in some sort of maintenance operations or...
It would be rare that we would find a reuse for these tees or pipes. We've got a boneyard of them that we've kept over the years and then eventually we load them up and take them to Salina Iron and Metal and sell them. But we keep them for a while till we get tired of walking around them. If a case comes up, we'll use it.
Any chance we could give them to Brad's people and weld something together or...
He might want to.
He'll take them just in case, yeah.
I saw the note on there, I thought I'd ask, so...
We do often save those materials and kind of like at home, you walk around them for a few years and you decide you really didn't need them, but we try to reuse them if there's an opportunity.
Sure. Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Ms. Tasker. Anyone from the public care to comment on this? Sure.
Yeah, last time I forgot to give you my name, Norman. What, Flooding Hill Road. This surplus equipment you got, you people are wanting art, weld it together and make art out of it. It won't cost you anything.
That's what I just said. That's what I just said. Look at that, finally in touch with my citizenry. Look at that.
I got to tell you.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. That's a brilliant idea.
Well, it is. It'll look just as good as what you got.
Well, sometimes, well, that's maybe debatable.
Paint it. Paint's cheap.
Thank you. Anyone else on there with any others as insightful? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve change order number one for the downtown wellfield improvements contract to airstrippers project number 10-2840 to Walters Morgan Construction Incorporated Manhattan, Kansas, in the amount of $138,448, which results in a revised total contract of $1,054,448.
Second. Second. Motion second to approve the following items for downtown well fields contract two airstrippers project number ten two eight four zero, and a second, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries five zero. Moves us on, I believe, to...
Uh, hang on.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do second part, sorry, second part.
Part two here. I'll move that we approve supplemental agreement number four with HDR Engineering Incorporated of Kansas City, Missouri, for computational fluid dynamics modeling and engineering services for phase one downtown well field improvements, project number ten dash two eight four zero, in the amount of thirty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars, which will result in a revised estimated fee of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Second.
Second. Motion is second to approve supplemental agreement number four. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries five zero. Now, we'll move on to development business.
Item eight point one, citizen request for affirmation of low-income housing tax credits.
Mr. Abbe, I believe, on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, we bring for you today a request by a citizen and owner, of the owners of the Lee Building for resident, for, excuse me, for the use of development of low-income housing tax credits. The city of Salina has in the past used tax credits for various projects through the community. I think prior, just before I got here, we, we completed Pioneer President's Place as well as Reserves of Prairie Glen, and since coming to Salina, we have completed projects such as Heart Heritage at Hawthorne. So we know that tracks, the tax credits are used in the community and been viable to various projects within, at with our community. Two thousand and fifteen brings a year of new tax credit availability for the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. There's approximately six million six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars of tax credits that'd be available for the year two thousand and fifteen. One of the main things that we want to bring to your attention today is the fact that February sixth, two thousand and fifteen is the date the applications are due for low-income tax credits, and therefore, we're on a little bit of a fast track with this project to bring to you today the information that we received from Mr. Forrestall about ten, twelve days ago now, as we start looking down the project. Community support is a very important factor within the projects that we have seen in the past, and we also added in your packet a couple of projects that had received tax credit money allocations previously, so you can get an idea of what staff has gone through in previous projects with tax credits with the state of Kansas. Today, we bring for you a request by Mr. Forrestall to use tax credits or potentially use tax credits on a project at the Lee Building. He would prefer to you today to, since we do not have an actual project to place in front of you, that we have some type of affirmation from you as the city commissions that tax credits could be used on this project. Last Friday, Mr. Skregg and I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Fred Bentley. Mr. Bentley is the chairman or the person in charge for the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation for Kansas Housing Tax Credits. And Mr. Skregg has added, added a memo to your list, I think it just came out to you today, from when our conversations from late Friday afternoon, and so Mr. Skregg's going to talk to you briefly about that memo, as well as what we found out from Mr. Fred Bentley, and then we'll be able to open it up to the owner for his request from you. So, Mr. Skregg?
The staff report that you provided last week and that was distributed in the packet went into great detail in terms of the submission requirements and the application deadline that, that we have been familiar with in the past and that was included in the two thousand and fifteen documentation, and, and we didn't have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Bentley about this alternate approach of asking for an affirmation that tax credits could be used on an unspecified project until, till Friday. And we, we wanted to do that just so that we could be clear in communicating to you what Kansas Housing Resource Corporation's position might be on such an approach. Frankly, we expected the answer to be that that wasn't acceptable, and to our surprise, Mr. Bentley acknowledged that he had spoken with Mr. Forrestall and had actually suggested that approach, and so we ended up having quite a bit more conversation with him about, trying to understand the application of the rules as they're lined out in their, their qualified plan, and he basically acknowledged that he was trying to be helpful and facilitate a project. He knew that, that the Lee Building was something that had, had been under consideration for quite a while, and if I were to boil it down, he indicated a willingness to accept a resolution of support from the city of Salina after the, the application deadline, and he indicated that that's been done in the past. So, we could choose to provide a resolution of support as late as April first, because they don't actually make final designations till May fifteenth. But he also did point out that the, the developer would have to submit a full and complete application by the February sixth deadline. So we had quite a bit of conversation about, you know, kind of the practical difficulties of that in terms of when the developer might pull their information together and, and when the city might have some information that we could review and consider the, the details of a development proposal, and all I know to tell you is that he, he, the process he described was kind of putting that in reverse, allowing the developer to apply to the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. The city then can get the details from the developer and the owner of what might be proposed and, and then consider whether they wish to pass a resolution of support. We express concern about the expectation that it might create that if we're providing preliminary unqualified affirmation that low-income housing tax credits could be used, and our, and our conversation was cut a little bit short, so we didn't have an opportunity to, to pursue it in detail, but I think where it was left was that he would be available Friday of this week to have additional conversations about how to proceed. I think his expectation would not be, well, I came away with the impression that you really didn't need anything from the city at this time in the way of an affirmation, the resolution of support could come later, and then it'd be an opportunity for us to have a conversation. So, we prepared revised staff recommendations for your consideration, and I would tell you that we still, as a staff, do not recommend a blanket approval of low-income housing tax credits, unqualified in any fashion, nor do we recommend that you try to itemize items that you would find acceptable or what an acceptable project might look for, for fear that we might miss considerably significant details. So the recommendation that, that we have for you is to postpone consideration of use of low-income housing tax credits until your Monday, January twenty-sixth meeting. To instruct staff to attempt to coordinate a meeting or a conference call that would include city staff, Mr. Bentley from the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, Mr. Forrestall and his chosen developer to discuss an application approach that would be acceptable to KHRC. To request that Mr. Forrestall and his chosen developer provide to staff no later than Monday, January nineteenth, a redevelopment plan and financial pro forma in as much detail as possible and representative of their intended approach for preliminary review, and then also noting that the city commission would reserve its right to either defer action on a resolution of support until after the submission deadline, or to deny support for a two thousand and fifteen application altogether, depending upon both the quality of the application prepared by the developer, as well as future review of the details of the developer's proposal. So basically, based on the, the conversation with Mr. Bentley, I think we, there is an opportunity to allow the developer to put an application together, allow us to consider that application after the, the February sixth deadline, and then make a decision on whether we wish to pass a resolution of support prior to approximately April first. But staff hasn't had a lot of time to, to strategize with Mr. Forrestall in terms of his intentions or the ability of the, which developer it might be and their ability to prepare a, an application and get those details to the city for review. So, at this point, we are, we, we placed it on the agenda at Mr. Forrestall's request with the intention of trying to keep that option open, recognizing that redevelopment is a, is a big, significant priority for him, and the deadline is getting close, and that's really all staff has to offer at this point.
Okay. Any questions for staff then? None? Okay, with the applicant, care to come up?
Mike Forrestall, Lee Buildings, two fifty-four North Santa Fe. What I'm requesting is an affirmation, as you've been told from the state. Basically, it's a double-edged sword. I know what the past process has been, and we've requested developers to come and present information. Now, I didn't give the staff any of the information because it is copyrighted data. I have copies of their blueprints. I have a pro forma that shows it's about a sixteen million dollar project with a hundred and twelve apartments in it. Now, it's a good-sized project, and this project has been requested before and has theoretically been turned down, and that developer has since moved on, and he is open to coming back and doing it. I have letters of support from four developers right here that would like to do a tax credit project, but in this day and age, most of their tax credit projects have to be a hundred percent tax credit. They cannot make them work in the economies we have today. I have a letter here from one of the largest in Kansas City, Cohen Esrei, and they, they will be glad to come here, and they have fifty-seven thousand apartments that they own. Here is Pioneer Group, they're happy to come back and do another one. I have Mansky, Jack Mansky out of Wichita, he just finished a nine-story, one hundred percent tax credit project in Hutchinson, in downtown Hutchinson. I have Jason Sword, whose plans and information I have at this time that he's, he's basically tried one other time, and it, he'd be happy to come back and do it as well. Now, I also have Tony Kresnik of Sunflower Investments, oh, excuse me, Landmark Investments, and he'd be happy to come and do it. He's the one that started this, but as I said, it's a double-edged sword. I have five developers that want to come to Salina and develop, and they all like it because Salina's in the middle. They have, most of them are situated in Kansas City, they own places in western and southwestern Kansas, and they'd like to come through Salina and have a project. But the other side of this sword is, I've owned this for quite a while, and we're getting to a point of no return. Between my taxes, my insurance, my upkeep costs, I'm about done with it. That's where I stand, and I need some, some form or fashion, I need to know whether I can get a developer here, and try, quite truthfully, I can't foresee these people wanting to come here and present each one of them and spend thousands of dollars. That's why I talked to Mr. Bentley, that's why he came up with the idea theoretically to just ask for affirmation, whether it be a straw poll, or whether it actually be a motion vote, whichever it be, to get some indication of where to move, because I also own enough adjoining properties to park a hundred and forty cars around it. Now, I have other people that are interested, I have buyers for the other properties, and the minute I sell those, you'll never get the lead developed because they'll never be parking for it again. So I have to get, I have to move on, and this is the year I'm going to move on. If I don't move on, it's gone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public here to speak on this matter? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission to possible action, more questions if they have them.
Mr. Forrest, is your understanding...
Yes.
...that you could proceed currently without any official, even a straw poll affirmation from us?
That'd be the developers. If I get none of the developers that want to spend that kind of money to do that, because one developer had talked to the Chamber of Commerce and SDI, and quite truthfully, folks, we, the city dollars support those, and everybody from myself and every, I imagine, most everybody here in town, pretty well believes that that is an arm of the city, and when they're told that the city won't support a hundred percent tax credit project, and they can come up with no agreement between the SDI or the Chamber of Commerce, they move on. That gentleman moved on and developed two other buildings in Wichita. That gentleman was told he could only get a sixty forty, which would be sixty percent affordable and forty percent market. He was told that the city of Salina wants more affluent people to live there so they'd have more money to spend downtown, so...
It's the developer that you really need this for and not your application with...
That's my, that's my, like I said, it's a double-edged sword, Trent. When these developers come in and they have to make out architectural plans and do all the performas and all the information they have to provide Fred Bentley as well as yourselves costs thousands of dollars, they don't want to do it unless they know that they have a good chance of getting the project, not a hundred percent, but a good chance.
You mentioned SDI, where, or do they have someone here that would like to...
No, they no longer have a manager that I know of.
Well, you just had mentioned that they're supporting of this, do you have a letter then from them?
No, no, I did mention that they supported it prior. I was, John, I was a board member of SDI for a few years, and they were, they were supporting of it then.
But we're, we're talking about a current, a current effort that you're trying to take place on this.
Right, I understand, no, they, as far, I haven't talked to their board, but there's, there's a few members on the board that I know, but other than that, no, I have not taken it to the board.
Because as, as far as I can see, and, and I think it probably goes to some of the comments that Deputy City Manager Skregg made, is that we don't have a, we don't have any particulars other than a location of this project. We don't know, we don't have numbers, we don't have a conceptual plan, we don't have...
Would you like to see it's conceptual?
We, well, I think that that's all part of an application process that I think we would want to see before we gave any sort of blanket conceptual or perpetual obligations for tax credits on a, on a project such as this. I do think that we would want to see more specific details, and it sounds like if we, if we do postpone a major discussion and consideration till we can have the conference call and some of the, a little more detail put together, and when I'm reading this, and you can fill in some of the blanks perhaps with us on this, is that I think what we're looking for is, at the very least, for you to choose a developer. If it says here for you and your chosen developer, is that what we're kind of getting at, is getting to more detail, like picking a developer and...
Correct. Presumably, the developer is going to drive the decisions as far as redevelopment and financing a lot of the key decisions, so until a developer's chosen, I don't know how we can get a sense of what's intended.
Folks, I don't, I don't choose a developer. The developers choose me. They purchase the property from me. Now, whether they want to go to that much work, I don't know.
Well, that's, that is not...
But that's where the catch twenty-two becomes, John, is the, the fact that unless they know, or that I know, that it can be a tax credit project, they, they may not want to put any money in it, even though I have five people that are wanting to look at it, doesn't necessarily mean they want to put the thousand dollars into it to create all that.
That, that's what developers do.
I realize that. I realize that. If, if, I, I have to tell you, they, they have all known me for years, and if they'd want to do it, they'd probably done it by now, if they felt that the city was agreeable to making it one.
How much difference is there between can be or has to be, as far as the...
The percentage, Trent? Well, I can tell you that Mr. Sword told me the percentage was sixty forty. He told me that thirty-seven was, thirty to seventy was a break-even, he'd prefer eighty twenty, and on a hundred and fifteen apartments, twenty percent market rent gives you about twenty-five market rent apartments. So, all I really need to know is where do we go from here? Otherwise, I got to tell you, I mean, as my letter has stated, I've got other uses for my money, so...
What, what type of timeline do you consider yourself on with the developers?
Well...
As far as having to make decisions, right?
I've, I've been sick the last week, the developer's been sick the last week. We're trying to get together, and I know he's trying to put some stuff together so that he can possibly present next Monday. As far as I know, that's the last I talked to him, but I have Jason Sword, who has stated the same thing, and he's already created all that document two years ago. So it's not like he can't probably just jump right in there.
And that was, you, you mentioned all that, but was, who was that presented to?
He tells me that it was presented to the city, but Mr. Gage says he's never spoke with him other than preliminarily, so I'd have to assume it was either SDI or the Chamber of Commerce.
And neither one of them are here to...
No.
Commissioners, just to give you a little more insight, we, there was, at that, at the stage that Mr. Sword's company was looking at the project, there was a meeting discussion with staff, S, members of SDI and members of, of Mr. Sword's staff, and it was kind of a pre-conceptual meeting on thoughts and ideas about that, so a lot of input was provided at that time. That was really prior to any discussion or thoughts you might have even had on percentages of market rate versus tax credits or anything like that. It was really very preliminary. And the other role that staff took at that time is, as they were trying to figure out what their concept might be, there are lots of questions about tax incentives beyond just tax credits, and so we're, you know, Mike does a pretty good job with the spreadsheet running numbers, so we kept trying to put in what certain types of incentives would do as far as just kicking out numbers for them to consider, and then it was at some point after that, we hadn't heard in a long time, and then we'd found out that they had, did not have interest in the project, at least at that time anymore. That's pretty much been our role.
So with the twenty-sixth, work for you as far as...
You mean the eighty twenty plan?
Well, I mean, January twenty-sixth, I'm sorry.
For the twenty-sixth, I can't, I can't tell you that, Trent, without talking to the developer, but it, it works for me, I don't have a problem, but I'm going to make sure.
And the application has to be submitted by February sixth, that's pretty quick.
Like you said, I, I know that's what these guys do. Like you said, I know that's what these guys do for a living. Whether they want to, I don't, that's up to them. I have, there's five of them. One of them's already got, has the information compiled from two years ago, so depends on who wants to move the fastest, if that's the case.
So why can't that be done without a resolution from the city?
Well, the resolution would have to come for quite a while, Kay. As Mr. Scrag over here said, it wouldn't be till 1st of April. Wouldn't be necessary for the state.
Right.
Only, only, only thing I'm asking for, as I stated, was a double-edged sword. I, I either move forward and sell my adjoining properties and the Lee buildings, whether I sell them or donate the Lee buildings to charity, because the minute they're without any parking, they're useless to us. Or I get a developer, and I've got five of them that want to do it, but we're talking about them putting money into it, and unless they feel secure in getting a, a what? A close vote? A possible project? I know Mr., I know Mr. Sword won't come back unless he knows that he'll get a better split than 60-40, because he can't make it work. And 70-30 is a break even, so...
So he, he wants a binding?
No, he doesn't want a binding. It's just, just as we stated, whether it just be an affirmation of some, whether you say, yeah, I am all for that. Nobody says it has to be a motion or a vote, or just a straw vote.
And where does that put him if we then subsequently change our mind based on new information?
That's life. That's life. We all, we all go to the store and pick out something different. Anything else?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, so staff's idea, just wait out and see what the plan looks like, and before we come to something today, is that...
I don't, yes, I don't expect that would give us the opportunity to do the full review that we would typically do, but we certainly would be able to give you more information than we can today.
Would that give us enough information to express affirmation of the project on the 26th?
I think we might be able to give you enough detail that we might feel more comfortable talking about 100%, 80, 70-30, 80-20, 60-40, that type of conversation. The details would still, there's a, there's a lot of financial and redevelopment details that I think you'd want before you would go much further.
Yeah, and I'll just say that I'm reluctant to, again, go any further than in doing any sort of cart before the horse here, because I'm not even sure the way some of this looks that there's even a possible project there. So anyway, I guess if there's any more comments...
Anyone else?
Before a motion, I'll...
Could you elaborate on that, or are you...
Well, I just think that we, we have processes in place, as does the state and everything, that clearly outline kind of what we really need to have and want to have to make a good decision. And also, when we have, when we have those processes, it's good to follow them, because if we don't, then the next person that wants to come in for this is going to say, well, hey, I just want a show of hands, or I just want a straw poll, so to speak, or, or whatever. And I'm just saying that I'm uncomfortable doing straw polls and, and speculating on projects that I have no information on. And so it sounds to me that there was a conversation with the gentleman from the state that said, let's get together, do a conference call, we don't need to have this from you, or information from you, until after that point, it allows the applicant and his developer to move forward on this thing. And it doesn't sound like we're standing in the way to hold that back. But for us to give any sort of endorsement or anything prior to having some of that information, I think is, is a little irresponsible of us. And so I would just personally feel more comfortable to let that process work a couple of weeks further along in it without holding that up, so that we have more information and we can make a, a well-educated, informed decision at that time.
Mr. Scrag, Mr. President, for that conference call, do you have to have a single developer with you on that conference call, or just information from the various developer?
Well, or, or do you even know? Trent, like you, I just got that information when I sat down, so I'm unfamiliar with it. I'll be there if we have a conference call, and I'll ask the developer to be there, whichever one it may be, whoever feels they're ready enough, if that is the case. Otherwise, it may be nobody, so I don't know, till I talk to developers.
And that was my wording, the reason being, I think there's an expectation by KHRC that, that there will be a full application on the part of the developer by February 6th. So if we're having a conference call, conversation about next steps and what is due at the deadline and what isn't, it seems like we need to have the developer at the table to say, I can do that, I can't, here's what I can produce at this time, can I get an extension on something else?
Right. And I might just add that I think that's, I think that the state probably wants to make sure that, that there is a project. And my concern is, is that I, I want to make sure that there is a project, because we're asking staff to expend considerable amounts of effort on something that we want to make sure is a real project. Otherwise, we're just, we could have easily a couple hundred hours of staff time into this thing, and there not end up being a project out of this thing. And so I'd like to safeguard taxpayer dollars and how we utilize staff by making, going about this in a prudent fashion, that we have a significant confidence that there is a project before we expend a lot of staff time. We are, and, and I think you would admit, we've already extended a considerable amount of staff time
Oh, yes.
...to getting to this point.
No, I agree, John.
Because I think we all want to work with you to
Right, no, no.
...fulfill that. But if it works to where we can, we can have a time to work through that, and it doesn't hold you up on that, and it sounds like that's the case from Mr. Bentley, then I think that that's, and then we'll see this thing in a couple weeks, so it's not like we're tossing that.
No, we're not, we're not pushing it off forever, John. I agree. And the staff has been great about it all, don't get me wrong. But I just wanted to bring, bring to light, after talking to Mr. Bentley and what he has said, and, guys, the simple fact that it's a $16 million project, and I'm sitting with a double-edged sword if I can't get a developer here, so...
And I think with a $16 million project, we should not be hasty in this idea, so...
No, I, no, I agree. That's why I never asked for resolution. All I was trying to ask for is what the state had asked me to, you know, tell you, to get some form of affirmation before I get too many developers involved, so...
Commissioners, a couple things that might be helpful to you. One is, is that while kind of the context of municipal government in Kansas is, is open, open meetings like we're, we're having right now, when you have a situation like this in which you may have multiple developers and you have business interests, trade secrets, the phrase being used before, we have the ability, both in handling of information and in even conversations with you, if necessary, to keep aspects confidential up until a point that you'd have to make, take an action out here. So we have the ability, if, if needed, to work with Mr. Forrestal and whichever developer. And we also have the ability to keep that confidential and to, to work with you confidentially if necessary. That's one thing to keep in mind that might be helpful. And the other thing is, and I may need to ask it as a question to Mr. Forrestal, but when we're talking about not necessarily voting, but a straw poll, I think the question today is, is first of all, recognition that the need that he's getting from the developers on the percentage of tax credit units in this needs to be very high, let's just say minimum 70, 80%, but possibly 90 or 100%. And so his real question, I think, is, is generally speaking, are you open that if he gets a developer that says, yeah, I'm ready to submit with that high percentage of number of units that are tax credit driven, are you open to just looking at that proposal if it's prepared and brought back to you? Is that really what you're looking for?
Pretty much, yes. Yes, Jason, pretty much.
So if you are...
I know, I know those guys are, they're negotiable to a point. They'd like, of course, everybody likes to see 100%, but they're negotiable to a point.
So, yeah, while you're not obviously able to, to deal with a specific proposal today, if you're simply open to looking at it, if he gets one, that's what they're looking for, so that he knows, the developer knows, it's at least worth spending some time and maybe a little bit of money to prepare something?
Right. Speaking from a design standpoint here, it's very difficult without a plan to kind of see how your mix might work. Because I can see a situation that you might not, if you got 80-20 mix of subsidized and, and market.
Right.
Is it all going to be rental housing? Are you going to have some fee simple to where you'd have people owning
No.
...their own?
No.
See, because I think one of, that's a fundamental concern on my part, is that I think when you have an asset like that in your downtown area, and you're trying to do a development or redevelopment of your downtown that includes multimillion-dollar rec centers, hotels, significant upgrades to your streetscaping and stuff over time, and things that could easily add up to a 50 male, 50 to 80 to 100 million dollar downtown redevelopment over a 10-year span, I don't know that a rent subsidized housing and apartment project is an ideal use for what I think many people would consider, and perhaps you did when you, when you obtained the property, something that had more of a mark, a much higher market rate or sales potential, a higher-end type use than, than a rent subsidized housing. I mean, I think that if you look at other places that have this sort of potential for loft-style living, they're generally a higher-end market. And I think that when you just look at saying, boy, we just want to do rent subsidized apartments, you start looking into, is that, would those be residents that would have an ownership in the downtown and tend to spend more money and have more disposable income? And I think the answer to that is probably not. And so just speaking from my standpoint, if I look at a big picture of what I want our downtown to be, I do think that we need all different income, moderate and low and high and, and that for, so, so forth. But I think that we already have a lot of low and moderate income housing in the downtown. I think that that particular property offers probably the, one of the better opportunities for a little bit more of the higher income, which would generate a little bit more higher tax base. And so just as a general flush, without seeing any plans, I have a lot of these concerns and wanting to know what's going to happen on ground floors, and knowing what's going to happen, and what's the overall revenue picture look like from this project, before I could throw in and say any sort of percentage. Because just with that, I would say 0% is probably my picture without seeing any plans whatsoever. That number could change if I were to see how those might interact with one another.
Well, John, you'll have to talk to the developer about that. I'm just a person selling it. And yes, you're right, in the years gone by, when times were good, everybody thought that way. But times aren't quite that good, and borrowing money's not quite that easy. And that is a $16 million project, and it is in North Salina. And it doesn't have the pull that you might have in Kansas City Power and Light, Wichita, places like that. Unless you're going to put that $100 million in the remaining portion of that block and make it look much better, most of that block is going to be used up in parking just for the Lee. So improving that block more, I don't think you have enough room. Improving the Lee, yeah. You might say that low-income housing doesn't have any money. Well, we're talking about working families, and we're talking about people that also know people, that also have relatives, that also come downtown and spend money. So don't discount working people, but thank you.
Well, I think that by no means whatsoever was I talking down to low-income, hard-working people. I just think that if you're looking at a strategy for downtown, and they're not here, so they can't speak to it, but they've told us over and over about all the economic development and all the, all the other activity that a multimillion-dollar rec center is going to generate and drive downtown, we're on board with that, and we're a partner with that now. We have a vested interest in saying we want to provide the highest opportunity for people to come in and invest in downtown. And the best way that we're going to get people to invest in downtown is to say, we're going to encourage the highest and best use for the properties in our downtown that can generate those. And I think when we just throw out, throw, throw it out the window by saying, the last five years of the economy have been tough, and so let's just do what we can and, and call it good, I think we kind of short-change ourselves in the future by saying, let's make that decision now instead of with a, with a broad look. As I said, we've got people looking at really high-end, you know, higher-end hotel-type uses, we've got people looking at a $9 million recreation center that's supposed to drive people and be a gem to the downtown, which we all, I think, believe it will be, or else we wouldn't have agreed to go along with, with a plan like that. So I, I just think that, and that's my part, I mean, I guess my straw in this thing is kind of short, and that is to say, without any sort of information beyond that, my call would be, I'm willing to not, not do a, not recommend it without any further, without any further information, so...
Part of the property that you were talking about, using it for parking lot, would that include that, I don't know, the ownership of the property west of the post office?
No, the, most people, most developers, Randy, say that that's too far for those people to walk.
Okay. And so, but that, that property itself, from what I understand, is potentially able to handle quite a bit more retail, and who knows?
Well, that's uncommercial.
What else that might go in there?
Well, quite, quite truthfully, Randy, I bought, I bought that to put additional pay parking for the Lee residents and storage facilities is the reason I bought that. Now, whether anybody else wants to develop, that's fine. I've, I've had, last year, some, some lady wanted to make it into doggy daycare and buy it all, and put a big doggy daycare center in there. I turned her down. As I tell everybody, I'm not going to start selling any property until I get some form of affirmation what I need to do with the Lee building. Once I find out the Lee building is not acceptable, then all the remaining property gets sold. So I told them to come back to me this year and find out.
And I may be a little off on here, but just, I know we're in the middle of, nothing specific, but, but I know we're looking at some housing studies and things like that. I've just always maybe had a little bit more of a negative view, not necessarily of the people, I don't want to get into that and characterize us, but I tend to think when you build income-qualified housing, that's kind of what your community brings, when you don't go looking for a higher standard. And I know there's no magic wand, and this is just more philosophical. I tend to agree a little bit with, with the vice mayor, it, you know, it sure be nice to see a, a big anchor, and I think it would be short-sighted to say, well, this is what we got now, let's just go with this. Because I think it handicaps any future development that we really do down there and limits other people who may have wanted to invest more in the downtown. I, it just gets back to an entire philosophical issue that I've had, that we've got to get the wages up, we've got to do these things, but it seems like we keep going after all of the sorts of things that don't make us a better community, make us a weaker community. And so, and I, and I've been in Hutchinson, and I've watched them working on that downtown, they're doing a nice job. It does look good. But there's concerns of the business owners of whether any income will come from that, whether it's simply just extra traffic and maintenance on their part for their buildings. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to look into that future and that, that crystal ball and say, what's going to happen? But my crystal ball would include a lot more ownership in property and a lot less rent subsidized. One interesting thing I, I heard on, and, and, you know, maybe this is something you've considered too, I'm sure you've looked at lots of different things in your ownership of this building. A lady spoke at Rotary today who looks at the aging of, of humans, and one of the things she talked about was an aging population. She mentioned that, I think, and Jason, you were there, you may remember the numbers a little bit better, but I think she said maybe by 2021, 1/5 of our population will be over 65, which will be the highest it's ever been, and by 2050, 50% of the disposable income will be in people's hands that are 65 and older. So as trends begin to market towards older people, and I know some of my friends, some of my coffee guys are getting older, and they said, you know, gosh, I'd really love to stay in Salina, but I can't find a housing unit with amenities that I can move into, because I really don't want to mow my lawn anymore, and some of that. And we've got a limited number of those, I know we've got, I think, maybe Resident 600 and some of those. Has that been maybe a consideration, targeting maybe and looking towards an older group who maybe want to walk downtown and cater to the restaurants and are going to have that as well? Now, I know looking at 2050 is probably a little far out for you.
Aaron.
But just a thought, if that's been something you've considered?
I used to be an owner in Resident 600. I was president for three and a half years. In a facility like that, which it is not a care facility.
Right.
It is an independent living facility for 55... It is an independent living facility for fifty-five and older. The, normally, the rents are so high that your percentage of population that can actually afford to live there was less than one percent.
Yeah. I'm thinking ownership though, was just my thought, whether that's been a model. Have you, have you looked at any, I mean, have you thought about any ownership model, selling a model?
Aaron, I own the buildings. I'm sixty years old.
Do you want to sell it?
Just, just as I've stated there, the money I spend can easily go towards my retirement.
Yeah.
I'm looking to divest myself of all of it because I expect to retire when I'm sixty-two. So now's the time to make plans. Now, don't forget, I, I spoke with Colin Ernst about their developments, okay? And they, they, they told me, and I had never heard this before, but a lot of people that build tax credit projects, and they are one of them, after fifteen years, they have no penalties and they can basically convert those tax credit projects to market rent. But they do have that first fifteen years. And usually that's, of course, the good life cycle of that building. But they then convert those over to market rents or they can sell them.
Okay.
So it's not something you're tied to forever.
I appreciate the comments about the use of the building. But also, you know, I don't know that one building is going to make or break downtown. And one thing we need downtown is people on the street. And, you know, this might be an opportunity, you know, to be a grand social experiment in educating folks how to go from renting to ownership. You know, there is a, excuse me, stigma and I, I come from a large east coast city, you know, where there is a definite stigma on low income housing, subsidized housing. And I was amazed when I moved to Salina that the way it's done here, you really can't tell, you know, with the single homes that are used for subsidized housing, you can't tell really who's living in, in what house. You know, so, you know, I understand the concerns and from a planning perspective and, and the disposable income. But I think getting people on the streets and, and it might be an interesting opportunity for, you know, to, to start or to bring in businesses that would cater to the needs of those individuals, be they older, handicapped. And like you mentioned, you know, requiring subsidized housing does not mean a person is necessarily going to be destructive to the property. Kind of have to be selective as to who moves in.
Well, we're also talking about working families. You're not talking about section eight. You're not talking about tenements. You're talking about working families, working people. So yes, granted, they're on the lower end of the spectrum, but they're not minimum wage workers either typically. So you're not, you're not talking about that segment of society, but you are talking about getting feet on the ground, family, friends, relatives coming down here. You're talking about more traffic, more, more people looking in the shops, you know, buying cozy in hamburgers, far as I'm concerned, you know? That's what you're talking about. And don't forget, you're right next to Salina Supply. No offense to it, it's a very nice establishment, but I wouldn't want to live next door to it. It's, I have heard comments from developers as well. I don't know if I want to do that. That's at the industrial end of the block.
Well, you're not marketing the property very well here.
He's telling, he's telling us the truth though, I think.
Well.
Yes.
But as he sees it.
But here's the thing, in, in reading the KHRC documents, I mean, they, they want specific numbers of what types of low income or moderate or whatever. I mean, those are the specifics they're looking for and you, and you refer to what-
But John, those are, those are all negotiable, as we said, just like the percentage, it can all be a negotiation.
Right, but you're asking for, for some sort of blanket endorsement here from us and we have no details whatsoever.
All I'm asking is that you are, I have affirmation that you agree that we can make it into a tax credit project.
Let me ask, let me, let me ask this question that has, I don't think has been asked yet. And the tenure of your ownership has been what? How, how long have you owned that?
Well, since two thousand and seven, but I was a partner in another group for quite a while and-
So you've had an ownership interest of some-
John, I was one of bought it at auction.
Okay, and what year?
Two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven, okay. So eight years. Was it always the plan to have low income tax credits to be?
Oh, no, no, no. Originally, originally it was going to be all market rent. We went out for an FHA loan and the loan fees, design fees and future FHA fees meant that the, the project had to be ninety-three percent occupied to break even.
Okay. But I mean, you've always looked at this thing as apartments. You've never looked at saying, boy, I'm going to get in there, I'm going to condominiumize this thing, I'm going to sell loft units?
No, John.
And?
I've never looked at it. I only look at one thing, sell it. Remember, I had, I had three other partners, they've all walked, they've all figured out that it's not going to work. I ended up with it. And the reason being, John, as I've stated here before, I'm a fourth generation Salina. My grandmother sewed dungarees in there. My father worked in there after the war.
That building has a lot of history.
That's right.
And when I think about all the controversy over the old St. John's Hospital, I think about the Lee building because it does have a lot of history and-
Well, it is what your Lee district is named after. So I don't, I don't honestly, and I've never felt, John, that we can, you've got to remember, I just told you, I was president of Riverside Plaza for three and a half years. I knew what it took to get people in there. And I know that you're not going to get, to be able to sell lofts and apartments next to what people would conceive as the industrial area of downtown Salina.
That's probably true.
Well, they're doing it in an awful lot of places and they're getting-
Well, then, I'm, John, if you, if you know that, if you know that, I'll gladly pay you finders free. Bring me one of them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's very realistic either, really.
I only work on identified projects.
If, if you have better ideas, I'm open to them, but as I said before, I'm tired and I'm done. So, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Well, I'll bring it back for, you still need a motion if we decide what we need to do? Is that kind of the attitude or?
I don't know that we have to have one, but if you-
You don't have to have one. We'll do it on the twenty-sixth.
If you want to-
If I don't bring a developer, sways.
Would we need to, we wouldn't need to continue this item? Can we, would we have a different item probably at the time on the agenda?
Yeah, I would expect so. I, I mean, at this point, I think the question is, is there an openness to looking at such a project in general? Now, certainly you could, if you agreed to say, yeah, we'll for sure support it and that's even better. Don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm sure Mr. Forstall would agree with that, but just even knowing that there's an openness to, to looking at such a project is very helpful to him. Doesn't mean that you'd support the project and I don't even know that you need a motion to that, but it's, if there's any indication whether it's worth his while to work with the developers at all to bring a project that you would look at all aspects, as we typically would with most agenda items, I think that's probably the first level type direction that would be helpful. I don't know that you need a motion again for that if you just, you know, individually you could tell us your thoughts on that.
I would think it'd be for us to have the minimum amount of due diligence to have the results of the, the joint conference call and whatever else additional information we could, you know, assemble within two weeks. Again, without any, you know, promise of, of action, we'd certainly be more educated to have some ideas to whether that it looks like something we want to give an affirmation to.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I think it's worth getting the information.
What kind of commitment, time commitment are we looking at to bring something back on the twenty-sixth?
It's definitely doable. The conference call shouldn't take long. The reason I chuckle is it really depends on the level of detail that we get, then we'll have to review it accordingly.
It's really more in the hands of, of he and his developer, isn't it? At this point?
Yes, yes.
Because personally, I don't want to shut the door on any possibilities, but I don't, I also don't want to go too far down the road without an identified project.
Yeah. Mike, what would they need on the twenty-sixth? What is expected from the housing folks?
In part, I think the answer to that depends on the conference call with Mr. Bentley from Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. My understanding or my takeaway from that conversation is by February sixth, there needs to be a full application on the part of a developer who has demonstrated that he has financing security, has a title to the property. I mean, it, it's no longer sketchy. So I'm working from the assumption that we ought to be seventy percent to that level of detail by January twenty-sixth, just for them to be successful in submitting an application. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, what, what does the KHRC need from the city by January twenty-sixth? I mean, that's what they need from the developer for sure and-
The January twenty-sixth date was, was my arbitrary date, trying to build some lead time into us having a conversation prior to the February sixth application deadline that is KHRC's deadline.
Okay. But did, did they need, I'm going to ask it, maybe I'm not asking it right. So by February date, the date that you talked about, February sixth, I believe? What does KHRC need minimally from the city at that date with, that would I suppose go along with the application?
Nothing.
Okay.
The, the only thing that ultimately is needed from the city is a resolution of support and they've indicated we can provide that as late as April first.
So the, the city commissioners, if there's a general openness to even looking at a project, don't necessarily have to look at it before February sixth?
No. I was, I was trying to respond to Mr. Forstall and his developers, trying to decide whether, how much effort they wanted to put forth to submit a February sixth application.
Is, what's being asked of us today any different than if Mr. Forstall had come to us in August with this idea and saying, we need to have this application filed by February the sixth and, you know, we're, we're going to get all this information together? Would our role be any different in that circumstance than it is today?
It is, it would in that we would have a preliminary conversation, we'd have more time, we'd have the luxury of that time to have a more preliminary conversation before the developer had to invest the time and money in the level of detail. We potentially could come to the city commission with all of that detail and a recommendation on a resolution of support so the developer then could finish up their application and submit a complete and full application by the deadline. So this is kind of reversing the process. The, the developer is proposing a project and then we'll catch up with that proposal after the fact and-
You know, I, I think one important thing that's been left out of this entire conversation is the fact that one of the requirements of the, of the state in this thing is a, is a market analysis of some sort in this thing, which when we get into talking about whether or not the developer is going to spend a whole lot of time and putting together plans and performas and financials and all that, boy, if you don't do that simple market analysis first, you're going to waste a whole lot of money. So one of the preliminary things that is a requirement of the state is that market analysis and any, any developer that's going to be interested in this thing is going to want to look at some of those numbers and, and see if it, if that, if that makes sense in the analysis. And, and as that relates to us kind of giving a blanket term is that we're not just simply saying with, with a go ahead to you of like, you know, we could simply go up and like, yeah, okay, we'll look at some number, but we have to sit here and realize that you're going to put that low income tax credit together with probably a historic tax credit.
I would assume so, yes.
And you're probably going to come back and ask us for a TIF district and then there's probably going to be some sort of-
No, John, I haven't heard anything to that degree.
Perhaps. Well, I'll tell you what, otherwise you're, you're probably, if you put everything you need to put together, you're probably still going to have a gap.
Well, that's the, like I, I've said all along, that's the developer's bailiwick, not mine.
But I'm just saying is that our simple straw poll here and a blanket obligation kind of almost puts us out there to say, well, we've already dipped our toe into the water of, of saying, yeah, we, we want this and are willing to go with this, knowing that it's going to require other obligations down the road. So those sixty, forty, seventy, thirty, eighty, twenty, they mean something when we look at further obligations that we may be taking a look at down the road.
Yeah.
And so that's why we want to be real careful about commitments that we make because it's, this is just the tip of it. You know, there's going to, it's going to require significant expenditures from, from the government entities at, at, at a further time down the road. And that's why I think we got to make sure that this fits in. I mean, we have comprehensive plans and strategic plans and everything else and I'm not sure that when you put all those together, I certainly know that an eighty, twenty split on, on rent subsidized housing probably doesn't match up with those plans. And so that's kind of in a long and-
Well, all I can tell you, John, is Jason Sword never gave me any indication that he was getting any help from the city other than the sixty, forty. I don't know that he was getting TIF fund other than historic tax credits and low income housing tax credits is all I knew that he was available to get. That's all I was party to, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So commissioners, it sounds like the, the timeline of which you'd get something more specific could be a week, it could be six weeks. It's really Mr. Forstall's timeline. Can it comes back to the question of just simply, are you, as a group, are you open to saying, well, when you have something, bring it to us, we'll take an objective look at it, knowing what you know? That's really it?
Yeah, I don't think that's, I don't think that's necessarily an issue, but I mean, maybe to just to give a little further direction that may show some negativity on, on my part is, you know, I look at these numbers and I hear sixteen million, there's a hundred and fifteen units, that's a hundred and forty thousand dollars a unit. And I always sit up here every time these happen and have a hard time when we have income qualified houses that sell for thirty percent more than the average selling price of a home for people who are paying full price. I'm not saying that these people aren't working people and I'm not going to get into discussions of sociology of these people, but I always have a hard time that these things are a hundred and forty thousand dollars when the average person who's paying full pop and has an interest in a job and a mortgage and all that is buying a hundred and four, a hundred and five thousand, could be a little higher now, but it averages around there somewhere. So I always just wonder, how nice are we making these things? And, and, and I still feel like it's just not the character we want there and, and I can appreciate Mr. Forstall has an investment down there, but we all make investments in things that we hope will be profitable for us. And even if you have some historic attachment to it, which I appreciate that, I think that's a good Salina in having the right idea. But when it comes down to it, it's still a business investment and it's still a risk. And I got two remote trucks, if you'd like to buy those, I'm making just money hand over fist with those two things sitting there insured and doing nothing for me. So, I mean, we all kind of take chances sometimes on things where our heart is, that we, we go in with the right ideas. I just don't know that adding a hundred and fifteen, plus we don't really know if the market can bear it. I mean, we haven't even seen our own market study. When we, when we commit to you and say, yeah, okay, it's okay to, to put government money into this hundred and fifteen unit, they're landlord, I mean, I'm a landlord. I mean, there are other business landlords out there who this may affect their ability to rent their houses. So now the government's getting into the business of continuing to support more and more large investment firms with rental properties. And while I appreciate downtown development and would love to see homeownership and town homes in that building and would love to see it turned into homes, I don't know that that's what I had in mind. And, and I agree, you'd probably say, hey, well then buy it and do something with it, you'd be happy to sell it to me. I get that. But, but I just feel like it, it's not what I would envision for a potentially hundred and twenty-five, the number keeps climbing, million dollar revamped downtown. I would like to see more, more ownership in it. I think there, there potentially could be buyers, but I'm always fearful when we look at these, anything that we do, and we've done a lot with Gary, with Mr. Hobby over there and he, he heads up a lot of these when they come before us. And every time I look at those numbers for how much each unit costs, I'm always shocked how expensive it is when the average person is living in a hundred and five thousand dollar house and these are a hundred and forty. Just, I, I just, my general support on, on this big of project and that price range and everything else is, it's just hard for me to get behind. I'm willing to look at it. I think it's, it's prudent for us to at least see what's out there, but my general gut feeling is that it's probably not something I'm going to be excited about unless there's some things I could see. I'd love to see an ability to move into ownership through them, but I understand there's rules that govern that they can't just turn around and sell them, but I, I'm just not a hundred percent behind the, the project on, on a, on a rent subsidized format and those kind of numbers. I know our numbers weren't even as gracious as sixty, forty when we discussed it earlier, but, or, or previous to this meeting, but just my thoughts, just to give maybe some direction to the guys.
I've been in Salina since nineteen eighty and I, I can't remember anything being in the Lee building during that, that length of time. And my, my only concern is, well, one of the options is, well, the building sits empty for another thirty years. And I, and I don't think that that's a good solution either. I think we need to, to find something that works, something that is good for downtown and something that fills a need, frankly.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see residents there, I just wish they were owners.
I'm, I'm, I'm one of those people that potentially is getting tired of mowing the grass. And, and frankly, there aren't that many places and I've got enough money to, you know, for equity in my home, I could, I could probably buy one of the units that were downtown, but there just aren't any.
And again, it's, I, we know it's not our place to try and give you a business model and to sit up here and say, here's what you should do with your buildings. I think we're just kind of discussing it more for the kind of, this is what we'd really like to see versus, and I think it's a fair discussion for us to have is what we, we kind of feel like, not just our ideas, but things like the comprehensive plan and some of the other studies have kind of shown us, we're- some of the other studies have kind of shown us, we're, we're trying to put at least a human feel to, to where we're going here and say, you know, other things to think about, maybe.
Can, can we say if Mr. Forrestal comes back with his developer on the 26th with a plan, we'll look at it?
For sure, for sure, and I think, I think we're there, yeah.
And I would encourage him to work with staff on, if he's willing to keep pursuing, and it sounds like staff wants to help out.
It sounds like there's consensus that ideally you'd like to see an owner-occupied situation in incomes that can generate, really, dollars into downtown, but you are open to a proposal in a week or whenever it might be ready to at least take a look at it.
Right.
Offer up your thoughts then.
Yeah, and they may have, I mean, they may have no interest, they may look at this meeting and say, "Ah, gosh, these guys", you know, I mean, but it's, I think it's worth throwing out there, at least give them our honest, honest thoughts on it, so.
Okay. Mike, is that, is that what you need today? Is that satisfactory?
I know, Jason, I, I'm not making the final decision, it's, excuse me. I'm, I'm not gonna be the one making the final decision, it's going to be the developers, whether they wanna invest the money. All I can, all I can do is tell you what they tell me, and basically that's it, is the fact that they prefer to make it a tax credit project, you know, that's all I can tell you. Now granted, you, you understand that usually, and I'm sure Trent tell you that, when you do create things like that, it does spur economic development in the rest of downtown, it is a catalyst, even though it is done with tax financing, you know, even though it is low-income housing, it does spur additional economic development. Other people come down and they buy condos. I know there's other, who is it, Norm Yankee's doing seven more in his building down there. So there are people building other condos for people, such as yourself, Randy.
I didn't know about that. Stuff happens, I don't know about when.
Sounds like rolling up, whoever, somebody could sell three units up here now.
Hey, I don't mow my lawn. Okay, so do you, that, that kind of gets you enough where you need to go, and we'll just assume coming back on the...
Yeah, I think that, that provides feedback at this stage, so we kind of know where you are, and, and we'll have to wait Mr. Forrestal to contact various develop, the folks that might be interested in developing that, and we'll see what, what's necessary next step.
Do we have a public forum part of this issue?
I, I did, I opened it up earlier, yeah. So, anyway, okay, so good on that issue, you don't need any kind of postponement or anything? Okay, well, thank you for coming in, and appreciate your interest in redevelopment. I know you own the building, but of course downtown's near and dear to all of us, so we appreciate you looking at it, so, yeah, yeah. Okay, I guess that takes us on to other business, any other business?
Executive session.
Okay.
I move to recess.
Oh, I'm sorry. Real quick, commissioners, you had asked at the last meeting, asked staff to look at the possible action for you to reduce your commission salaries.
I was hoping to skip that, yeah.
Your $300, 12% roughly. There, there was a question as to a couple preceding actions on the salaries. One thing we, when we looked, in the charter ordinance that established the $300 level was actually approved back in, towards the 98, early 99. There is a, a regular ordinance that was approved in 2005, and there's a differentiating effect with the regular ordinance, you only need three votes, whereas a charter ordinance you need a supermajority, so the, the 2005 action was actually a regular ordinance. I'm not quite sure why the need, unless they felt that it was good to show it in the front of the codebook versus in the back where the charter ordinance is, but, but nonetheless, so that charter ordinance, we looked and it looks like, or that ordinance, I should say, regular ordinance, in 05 looks fine, we wouldn't typically do it on a consent agenda, but there was a reason to package it, but there's, it's not so you can't do it that way. And so the, the steps you would take if you were going to, if you want us to go ahead and put in front of you the changing of your ordinance, of your salary, would be to bring a charter ordinance that would amend the number, because it is in the charter ordinance number 30, so we'd need to bring a charter ordinance, which is a first reading, second reading, and then you have two publications, and then there's a 60-day waiting period. And then after that, it would be set, if you still wanted to reflect that in the regular ordinance book early on in administration, then we'd give you a regular ordinance to do that as well, which would add some more time. So the charter ordinance process, as you're getting to be a little familiar with, roughly, I'd say 80 to 90 days, depending on first reading, second reading, and all that, and you get into the 60-day waiting period, regular ordinance is first reading, second reading, publication, so you're probably talking somewhere around a three-month period from beginning to end if you would like to do that.
So basically that allows 60 days for the public who is concerned at how little we're being paid to come in and tell us, we should boost the pay up a little bit.
You'd expect a lot of attention to that.
Do we anticipate, do we anticipate a petition?
I would.
What would the cost of that be? Would it eat up the savings?
Advertising?
Yeah, I, I can't, I honestly can't speak to the unit cost of that type of publication, there is a cost to do that, I, I couldn't tell you what that is.
Talking about staff time a while ago, fellas.
Charter ordinances do need to, do have to be published in full, they are not subject to the summary publication.
Maybe we better make it 15%.
The...
Getting worse all the time.
Did get to watch last week's meeting, and, while you were gracious enough to donate the money. Is there a way to...
You can vote against it.
Well...
Yeah, right.
I'm assuming the, 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 the purpose of this was to build a fund for the employee appreciation?
No, it was symbolic.
Well, I think what it, I think what it, I think what it does is that our entire salary is mostly symbolic.
Yeah.
So...
Pays for a little gas.
But I think what it does is, and the context was the such that, and we read it in the proclamation today, that when we recognize that a very large component of good government is to be able to retain, recruit, and appreciate, I think, staff with a high level of commitment and talent, and we do, and also, and I almost feel like it's part of a, whereas, you know, we, we have an employee appreciation breakfast every, every year, and some people would say, "Well, it's easy for us to appreciate the employees, we're spending taxpayer dollars to..."
Appreciate them.
Pay the, appreciate the employees, and I mean, not to say that, and listen, I think that taxpayers appreciate public service, public servants as well. I think they really do. I hear compliments all the time, I see letters all the time, that that's there, and I, I actually wouldn't have a problem if, if we didn't, and, and I don't have a problem that we haven't over the years. But I'm just saying that it's mostly symbolic anyway, so why not, in a time where people have such a negative view of government and governing bodies because of actions that are taken on, you know, certain things and...
Outside of our jurisdiction.
Right. That I think that it's, you know, certainly short-term, I think any commission could come along at any time and say, and look across the state and, and probably make a case for not $300 a month, but maybe $1,000 a month. I mean, I, it's not, it doesn't look out of line with most of the communities I've seen. That also get health insurance and other things, so I think that since it's fairly symbolic, that, and I'll make a correction, not $12 a week, but $9 a week, is something that I think we could...
From each of us.
Right, but I, I think the, the symbolism was to show some appreciation of our employees.
Right.
Just decreasing the salary just puts that money back in the general fund. I would rather see something either each commissioner being given the opportunity to voluntarily have that deducted, or, I don't know if it gets too complicated, reduce it only to the point that it goes into a special fund for that.
Breakfast.
Breakfast fund, but so that that money is protected for that specific event.
That, that's, that's a good idea, I hadn't thought of that. Maybe a question would be...
We just spent more money with our legal fees.
How, how difficult would it be to say with Human Resources to make a deduction out of a check, say, you know, instead of a charitable deduction out of a check? I used to have Habitat for Humanity taken out of a check, tax deductible, whatever. Obviously, this probably wouldn't be tax deductible. Would it be easier to do it that way? And then whoever up here wants to say, "Take that money out of my check and put it towards employee appreciation", would that be, could that be actually easier to do?
Yeah, we, we certainly have the ability to do, we do this with our employees to have deductions, for example, United Way is a good example of that, so I'm sure we have the logistical ability to do, to do that. Now, we can't, I wouldn't tell you to vote on making yourself do that, but if you just say, "Hey, we get $300 a month, I'd like to voluntarily ask for a deduction, to have money go towards what have you", I assume we could probably do that.
Okay, I'm perfectly fine with that.
I think that would be easier, that way you haven't touched, you don't have to go through all the...
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Procedures which were just mentioned.
Yep.
Well, my only thoughts are you're managing a fund every year, then at that point, too, I don't know if that makes, adds a little extra work.
The deductions aren't really too big a deal for us.
Okay.
It would be, I think it would be easier than dealing with charter ordinance.
Okay, okay, well, it's easier than...
And it can be invested in some fund that makes 80 percentages every year, so we'd actually have more.
Yeah, let me know where that place is, yeah.
I'd like to think so.
Yeah, I'd be happy at eight, yeah, yeah.
All right, you guys can all breathe a sigh of relief now.
And of course, we won't make it public who decides not to...
There's no pay to play.
No, we have somebody from the Journal back there, you know, we don't have to make it public.
And I'm fine with that, if that's...
Yeah, I think that works, and it just, we can just sort of let her know that we want it pulled out, and we'll all be poured together.
Now, can we do the executive, can we do the...
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
And, and real quick, commissioners, on the executive session, we have, we have a couple topics. On one particular topic, which we estimate maybe about 10 minutes, an executive session, we would expect the possibility that you would come out and take an action, or at least communicate a position or direction.
Okay.
And so what we'd like to do is have you, it's illegal to go ahead and make the legal motion for 10 minutes, for that, we'd take you back, then have you come out, and then after that, we'll go in to cover a couple other topics, which, or one other topic in which we would not necessarily expect you to come out and take an action. That way, for anybody who's waiting, we can get that out of the way.
Okay.
And usually that benefits the press if they need to report on your action or direction.
So 10 minutes for...
Legal. Yeah, the motion for a legal...
It'd be a standard language for the attorney-client privilege.
Okay. I move to recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely, adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, reconvene it, 6:51.
Second.
Motion, second, to move into executive session for 10 minutes and reconvene it, six, I'm sorry, 5:51.
I'm sorry, 5:41.
5:51. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in executive session to return in 10 minutes.
Thomas Bilbao of the Cuba Study Group says the increase...
San Francisco, Oakland, California, and New Haven, Connecticut, were only...
... There were already long lines today.
Extend executive session for nine minutes and return at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Motion, second, to move into executive session for nine minutes, return at 6:00 PM, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
5-0.
He says he plans to use it to check out books from the public library and visit some of the city's museums for free. For Was Sutarji...
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ timing of any court determination of that question. My recommendation to you would be that we not go forward at this time with a petition to the Sling County District Court seeking that determination. Instead, if the petition would go forward, and if presented with such a petition, I believe you, as any petition, can certainly view that as an indication of the opinion of those signatories, but that it would not have the effect of an initiative and referendum petition under KSA 12-3013, and would not compel any action on your part. That would be my recommendation, and would be my opinion if presented with such a petition, so that you know in anticipation, as would anyone else, that, that would be my recommendation at that time, that the presentation of that, any sort of petition of that nature, would not compel action on your part, as would a true initiative and referendum petition dealing with a legislative matter, just like we've seen in the past. So all of that considered, my recommendation to you this afternoon would be that we simply, if you concur, have your direction that we defer any action in this matter until further consultation with the, with the commission. And the point of that all being that there would not be the filing of the petition that was authorized, that you authorized me to file last week, but that instead, we would defer any action in that regard.
Do you need a true motion, or you just need a consensus from us all?
Given the nature of your action last week, I do think it would, I would appreciate a motion, simply concurring with the recommendation.
Somebody want to take that?
The other, I suppose I should elaborate, just to be doubly sure, that the recommendation does not anticipate that we would ever make such a filing initiated by the city. If there were to be a petition presented, as I indicated, my advice to you at that time would be simply to acknowledge that it has no force in effect as an initiative and referendum petition. And at that point, it would be incumbent upon others to initiate any judicial determination of that status.
So commissioners, in that case, if it plays out as if what Mr. Bingson's indicating, the petition would basically be advisory only. So quite honestly, you know, we talked before about time and money, the more we thought about it, it really didn't make any sense to spend any time and money now, at least on our end. If Mr. Ruska or anyone on his end would like to, that's certainly fine, and they can go do that. But as Mr. Bingson said, if they're successful in getting signatures, fine, comes back to you. We're very confident, legal opinion is, that it's administrative only, so in essence, you would not accept that petition, it wouldn't be bonding, it'd be advisory, and if, you know, if they want to challenge in court for judgment, that's fine, they can do that, and at that point in time, you can decide if we want to go call a question.
Basically, a lot of people tell us they don't like the way we're spending tax money, which is, every time you spend tax dollars on something that somebody doesn't want, you get that. So, I mean, it's just, that's the usual conversation, so...
Point of order here, do we need to make a motion to add this on to the agenda before we act on this?
That would be prudent, I think.
Well then, first of all, I would move that we add consideration of a deferral of action regarding Resolution Number 147152, as it amended Section 2 of Resolution Number 13-6988 for discussion.
Second.
And possible, and action.
Commissioner, I apologize, I know I am the one that used the term "deferral," and as we have talked about this, if, as I say, my recommendation, if thought through the potential progression of this matter, would not ever involve the city initiating...
Deferral is not the word.
And I'm concerned now that I, now that we've talked through it, that deferral is probably not the best word.
Let me ask you this, would it be a more clean action if we just, and this was done at last, last week's meeting, yeah, it's in the minutes here.
It was.
What about a motion to reconsider, and then, and then just leave it, and then an agenda item, and then if it fails for a motion, then, would that be a cleaner...
That certainly makes sense.
Okay. Okay, then I'll withdraw the attempt at the prior motion, and being one of the four that voted in the affirmative of this action last week, I will move to reconsider the motion made last week, and I don't know, let me see if I can find. Make a motion to reconsider item 7.1 of the January, what was the date of that meeting?
Fifth.
January 5th, 2015 meeting, which authorized staff to prepare a petition for, submitted to Sling County Court regarding Resolution Number 14-7152, as it amended Section 2 of Resolution 13-6988.
I'll second that.
So are we needing to put that on the agenda, or no?
Well, the, the effect of the motion, this being your next regular meeting, puts before you the question of whether to reconsider. If that receives a majority vote, then the matter will be up for reconsideration appropriately at this meeting.
So a motion to second to reconsider?
Yep.
Okay, a motion, a second to reconsider, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries, 5-0.
I have another question, a point of order, now that we're in the reconsideration of this thing, does a, does a no action equate to referral back to the original, or does it vacate the item entirely?
Well, I'll take responsibility for this, I'm the one that's put you back in a position of authorizing no action. I suppose, just for clarity and for the record, if you all don't mind, I do think it possibly helpful for all concerned, I will simply explain that with the additional information that we have obtained, particularly that from bond counsel, my recommendation is that we not take any action, initiate any action in the Sling County District Court, based upon any information that we currently have with regard to Mr. Fresca's petition. And if simply an endorsement of that recommendation is appropriate, that hopefully...
Okay.
Instead of voting no on the reconsideration?
Yeah, the recommendation is not to...
Is to vote no.
Well, the, no, the recommendation...
Just to take no action, just for no action.
Yes, it would be an affirmative endorsement of not filing suit, and so a yes vote would affirm or support...
We're not voting on the item that we are reconsidering, then?
Well, we would reconsider the motion that was originally made, correct? So it would look to reconsider that motion.
That's true.
So in essence, a no vote would mean no to the original...
That's right.
That's true.
And so that would leave us basically back at zero.
This is a double negative.
Has anybody ever seen The Life of Brian? Is this like the People's Front of Judea? Is this like, this is like a Monty Python film up here a little bit?
That's actually pretty simple.
I appreciate it, and in fact, the, you all are one step ahead of me on the parliamentary aspect. My, my mind is on petitions, and you are absolutely correct. The effect of the motion to reconsider takes us back to the moment when you voted. So, yes, one way to address this would simply be to reconsider that previous motion, and I'm sorry for the confusion that I'm creating.
Let me restate this, make sure we're on the same page. So the action that they've already approved to reconsider the question would take them back at the last meeting to the time when there was a motion and a second to approve that resolution, is that correct? Is that the place in the action?
That's correct.
So then to, so in this case, you don't, they don't want to approve the action.
That's correct.
So the mayor would call for a vote, ayes, presumably you wouldn't have any, you could, and then nays, which you would expect, if you agree, to have five nays, and then it's gone, right?
So do I, do I need to state the motion, or can I just say, vote on the previous question, or what's the best way to...
Probably wouldn't hurt, it probably wouldn't hurt to state the motion.
You have that, I don't have that, and you in front of me.
Right, and I can restate the motion.
Well, I think I need to just read it, correct? I mean, we don't need him restating the motion, I need to state that we have the motion and a second in front of us.
It's a courtesy, if you just, because you can read from the minutes what the motion was, what the action was, and that would be based on the motion.
It's a circular file.
File cabinet back here.
I have it right here.
Do you have it in front of you?
He has it.
This is just to remind the public what the motion was, it's, I don't think it's required by any means.
Sure, that was in...
But just as, another point of order, is it, would we want to treat this like we would any other, as we're reconsidering this, allow public comment? Should it be, since we did in the original...
So you could restate the motion, indicate that it's, there's a second, ask for public comment, after that, come back and vote it back up again as you did, or vote it no as recommended?
Sure, okay, well, we got a motion, a second to authorize legal counsel to prepare a petition to file in Sling County District Court, naming Mr. Ray Haruska seeking a judgment regarding proposed initiative and referendum petition relating to Resolution Number 14-7152, as it amended Section 2 of Resolution Number 13-6988, yes, 6988. Anyone from the public care to comment on this? Sure.
Wow, this thing has shocked me right there. I just wanted to...
Name and address, of course.
Yeah, you're right.
In the spirit of our new...
Ray Haruska, 235 North Santa Fe.
Thanks.
And this action that you're taking today, I don't really have a comment about it. I'm just, that's it, no comment.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from the public? My glasses, I can't see, I'm that far back, there's... Okay, seeing none, I'll close that session and bring it back to the commission for possible action. So again, an a is the negative, we don't want it, and a nay is what we want, so I assume, not to, speaking for myself only, not for the commission, so, okay, all in favor?
No.
Yeah.
Already confused.
All opposed?
No.
Nay, okay, that's, we don't say nay very often, so there's five, that fails 0-5, is that what you're looking for?
That tells us what we need to know, and I appreciate your patience with it all.
Reckless, but it got us there, but...
It'll look okay in the minutes.
The minutes, we don't often praise the clerk for how well she makes us look often.
Ms. Wicks doesn't look so sure, but...
Greg, how much time do you expect for the next executive session? Do you need?
You have to speak it loudly, so there's no, there's no, for the interest of public knowledge of what was set up here, they want to advise you there is a football game?
Yeah.
Not that the business of government isn't important, but...
I move to recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters and reconvene at 6:29.
Second.
6:30.
Motion, a second.
Let's make it 6:30.
Sure, motion, a second, to move into executive session for 10 minutes and return at 6:30, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries, 5-0, we're in executive session.
Commissioners, for the public's benefit, we do not expect to take any, we do not expect for you to come out and take any action after this.
Thank you, appreciate that.
...on earth, orange juice is much more popular than tomato juice. In an airline lounge or on an aircraft...